Oh.
Did you say anything?
Dustin. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's county council meeting. We will start with our invocation. Dustin Bryson is here from Morningstar Church in Darden Prairie. Hey! And our pledge of allegiance will be led by council member Joe Brazel. Would you please stand and remove your caps, please?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Creator of the universe, we come before you this evening. And I come before you and thank you for those doing hard work, making difficult decisions, Lord. I thank you for their perseverance. And God, I ask you that you would bestow your wisdom on them as they make these difficult decisions, Lord. Thank you for this great city. Thank you for the great leadership that we have. Thank you for all that you've done for us and the many blessings that you've bestowed on us here in St. Charles. It's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Elam.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
So tonight is the annual election of council chair. So I'll open the floor for nominations for chairman of the county council for 2018. Is there any nominations to come from a council member?
I'd like to nominate Dave Hammond.
Second.
We have motion made. And second, are there any other names to be put forward at this time? Seeing none, I would close the nominations and ask for acclamation by all those in favor of council member Dave Hammond for county council chair. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Let's swap seats.
Thank you, Councilman Elam. It's gonna be a hard act to follow, but I'll do my best. Next on the agenda, we have election of vice chairman.
I'd like to nominate John White.
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, any other nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote for myself.
There you go. All right. Congratulations, John. Do we have any? We don't have any public presentations tonight, do we? Next, we have a conditional use permit that's been tabled. That's bill number 4540, conditional use permit for trash transfer station to metro fill development.
Mr. Hammond, if I could ask, do we have an update on where things stand with that at this point?
Donna, do you want to provide an update?
Absolutely. At this point, we have heard from the hearing officer, and he is going to be in touch with the two parties, the applicant's attorney and the county's attorney, to organize a pre-hearing date. At that time, then, there will be a hearing date chosen.
Okay.
We do not have any indication of how far in the future these dates are going to be. The pre-hearing will be soon.
All right. So so far, he hasn't taken any actions as of this date?
That is correct.
Councilman, may I add that this afternoon, Associate County Councilor O'Sullivan sent a letter to the hearing officer asking that both the pre-hearing and the hearing be set before the end of this month so that the matter is heard before the month is out. And he gave all his exclusionary dates.
Great. I've been getting contacted by several interested parties within the public that have been asking for updates, and I just didn't know exactly what to tell them. Thank you.
So that bill will remain tabled. Next, we have public comment. Do we have anybody tonight?
We do. We have Thomas Grevy. You're the first one.
If you would come forward.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Mine is on the Silverman rezoning, which is bill 4555, I believe, from five acre minimum to three acre minimum. And I have some genuine concerns on it. Now, I'll be the first to say that it's their property. They can do with it what they see. If they want to develop it, they more than have the right to develop it. But there's concerns with the people that live in the area, which I am the property directly to the south of it. We've got 320 acres to the south of it. This is a 34-acre piece that they're trying to get switched from five acre minimum to three acre minimum. I think it was around 2007 whenever the county council made the southern portion of the county five acre minimum. And I'd like to see it stay as five acre minimum. That's my input on it. There's issues with soils and rocky ground for septics, water pressures. Typically, they'll drop down in that 3540 PSI range in the summertime. I know that's not a council issue. That's PWSD's issue. But that's really where we stand with it as residents that neighbor this portion of property. You know, the major issue that I see with it is the sightline coming in and out of this subdivision, this potential subdivision. I made some maps if the council would like to see them. Can I address the council? Approach them?
Sure.
Do you show us where the property is attached?
Why don't you drop to us off?
It's where the property attaches to Old County Road.
And it's not a very good sightline at all. So to raise the number of dwellings within that would just create more of a safety issue. And lastly, I just feel that it's reasonable to assume that the only compelling reason to grant a three acre minimum is so that the owner and developer could turn more profit. You know, I'd like to see it stay as five acres. I'd like to see the whole area stay as five acres, including our property. I don't want to see a precedent set for three acre minimums. That's it.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Arnie Deanoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Arnie A.C. Deanoff, public advocate and county resident. First thing I'd like to address, I was very disappointed when coming into the parking lot of this county council chamber, the executive office building, when I found police car number 641, a black Dodge Charger, running, the vehicle running, wasting our gasoline. You wouldn't do this at your homes. You wouldn't do this with your family budget. What makes a non-responsive, a police officer that's not responding to a call, not on a call of a 911 call or emergency, have the car running during this hour to two-hour council meeting? It makes no sense. I would hope that our $137,000 police chief David Todd would have some type of policy in his manual, he's trying to get national accreditation for a police department, to make sure that police officers are cognizant of taxpayer money and don't waste the gasoline unnecessarily. The temperature has risen. It's about 42 degrees out. It's not cold out, so there's no reason to keep that vehicle to run to keep it warm. The top priority of this county council is financial accountability and responsibility. My question is, is where is the list of bills at each and every council meeting or every month before the council for approval? I'm seeing that there needs to be proper checks and balances and make sure that we don't have any unnecessary fraud or unnecessary expenditures. Our director of finance, there is no county comptroller or nobody to look over the shoulder of the county director of finance. I ask that all the bills be presented to the council for approval on the agenda as part of this year, or part of this January, to make a clear slate of openness and transparency in county government. Filing for public office begins on Tuesday, February 13th, which is the second Tuesday in February, by filing a $50 filing fee. If anyone is interested in filing for county executive, county prosecutor, county collector of revenue, county collector of elections, recorder of deeds, county assessor, and sheriff, or county districts 1, 3, 5, and 7, please contact me, arnie deanoff, A-R-N-I-E-D-I-E-N-O-F-F at yahoo dot com, or 314-440-9000. You know, this council slipped at the last minute at the December 23rd council meeting, raises for the county executive and yourselves without public scrutiny and appeal. The county executive's salary will go from $137,314 to $158,500. It's kind of similar to the county executive who stocks the library board by picking a fired library director from Arlington Heights of one branch to manjar 12 branches, and we pay Mr. Brown $130,000.
Mr. Deanoff, your time's up.
I'll continue at the next meeting. Thank you.
We have Julie Vannidge.
Good evening, council members. Regarding the naming of the new Kisker Road-Pitman Hill Park to be named Veterans Tribute Park, I would like to address two issues included in bill 5559. The first one, it now reads, "Several soldiers from St. Charles County have been killed in the Persian Gulf, Iraq, and Afghanistan." What about Marines? What about the other service members? It is traditionally known that soldiers are only Army. So are we excluding all others that gave their lives serving in our military? To me, it is a disgrace that you are unaware of how many St. Charles County have been killed serving in the military. Today, it took me a 10-minute Google search to come up with six names. Those names are Captain Travis Petrunking, Sergeant First Class Daniel Sexton, Specialist Matthew Slaughter, Lance Corporal Drew Weaver, Specialist Dennis Kisselhoff, and Lance Corporal Philip Vannidge. The bill also reads, "County Executive and County Council would like to honor these fallen heroes in an appropriate manner." To be more specific, it reads, "All or certain members of the military from St. Charles County who have been killed in military action." Title 38 of the Code of Federal Regulations defines a veteran as a person who served in the active duty military or air services and who was discharged or released under conditions other than dishonorable. A military fallen or killed in military action is not considered a veteran. They died before they were given the chance to complete their military service. I feel the definition between Memorial Day versus Veteran Day applies here. Many people confuse Memorial Day and Veterans Day and feel that, excuse me, Veterans Day, and I feel that you are doing the same with the choice you are considering for the naming of the park. Memorial Day is a day for remembering and honoring military personnel who have died in the service of the country, particularly those who have died in battle or as a result of wounds sustained in battle. Veterans Day is the day set aside to thank and honor all who have served honorably in the military in wartime or peacetime. In fact, Veterans Day is largely intended to thank living veterans.
Ma'am, could you wrap it up, please? Your time's up. Can you wrap it up?
If you choose to name this Veterans Tribute Park, I am requesting each and every one of you to look me in the eyes and tell me not only does Lance Corporal Philip Vannidge not deserve the name, but no St. Charles County fallen deserves the honor of having a park named after them.
Thank you.
Jimmy Presson.
Gentlemen, how are you? I'm here about the park along with Julie. I'm a little bit different. I'm retired St. Peters 30 years. When I retired, I took a job as a Department of Defense contractor, and I embedded with the Army for two years. A year and a half of that was in Afghanistan. Where I was serving in Afghanistan was probably 10 miles down the road from where Lance Corporal Philip Vannidge was killed. Like I said, I was in the Army. He was Marines. Marines were west of us in Helmand. And like you said, the other thing that kind of hits to me, too, is the fact that I was there during the time, that time period is when I was deployed. I look at things in several different ways, gentlemen, about this particular issue. Me personally, I think it should be named after Philip. Yes, maybe the next person will come up and will fight just as hard as Julie did, getting the signatures and everything for her to get brought up and have this issue brought to you guys and have a park named after her, her son. Me, it's very important as a veteran to be in contact with parents. I'm in contact with other soldiers' mothers and family who were killed in action that I was with. It's very important for them. I know this because I am also a Gold Star recipient. My father was killed in 1966 in Vietnam. Even though it was just an accident, he just had, you know, a month and a half left before his deployment ended, and he was coming home. So I understand her feelings as a mother whose only child, am I correct there?
No.
You got three?
Youngest child.
Right, the youngest one. It's, these are what we live. This is what we need. And I'm telling you, as a veteran, if I see a park that's called Veteran Tribute Park, yeah, I will pay attention to it. But if I see a park that's named after a soldier, I'm gonna go there. It's gonna, it has more meaning to it. If it's something else, it's personalized. I know we try at this time to sit there and reach out to people and try to make it fair for everybody, and I understand that's what you guys are trying to do. But I don't think there's anybody else who's lined up in front of or behind Julie to have this park named after her son. I really believe it should be just named after her son. And the Marines do a wonderful job of gathering together and doing more things for these parks. So my recommendation is, let's not appease, try to appease everybody. Let's do this because you're gonna appease every veteran that comes around to tear, and Julie has a large following. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That is it. I have no more cards.
Do we have a oral report from the county exec tonight?
Mr. Chairman, no report this evening.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any items to be removed from the consented agenda? Motion to approve? Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have bills for final passage.
Bill number 4553, an ordinance granting an easement to Quiver River Electric Cooperative Incorporated across county park land located between Kisker Road and Pitman Hill Road.
Have any comments from the council? Any questions? Go ahead and read the bill again, please.
An ordinance granting an easement to Quiver River Electric Cooperative Incorporated across county park land located between Kisker Road and Pitman Hill Road. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
And bill passes. Moving on to bill number 4554.
Bill number 4554, an ordinance amending the Personnel Administration Plan, Section 115.710 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, concerning the pay grade assignments for classifications exempt from the merit system.
Do I have any questions? Go ahead, please read the bill.
An ordinance amending the Personnel Administration Plan, Section 115.710 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, concerning the pay grade assignments for classifications exempt from the merit system. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
That bill passes. Moving on to bills for introduction. First bill is 4555.
Bill number 4555, requested by Michael Herbert, sponsored by Joe Brazel. An ordinance amending the zoning district map at the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A agricultural district to RR single-family residential district as per application, RZ 17-14.
Yeah, I have some comments.
Go ahead, Mr. Brazel.
Is the applicant here? By any chance? Okay. I've had quite a few calls on this, and if you guys remember, we had a similar situation closer to New Melli when a young man was trying to build a house on his family farm. And if, the reason why we started, years ago, it was three acres. We changed it to five because of septic tank issues, DNR's request with Wayne Anthony and Sandy May. We worked on this back in 2006, and we changed it to five acres. And it's mostly, it's five acres in the southern part of the county. And Joe, you know, him and I've talked about this, but the soils are a lot different north than they are south. And it's hillier, and it's in the wine district and everything else. So I am pretty strong about sticking to the five acre rule. We've, Donna looked it up, and we haven't passed a three acre subdivision in this southern part of the county in like 20 years. We've done a couple when it was a family farm or a family plot, and we divided it up. But for profit, we have not, we have not given the variance on three acre subdivision. So I'm opposed to this. The neighbors on Old Colony Road are opposed to this. It's 37 acres, so it's permissible for him to have five acre lots, so I think he might lose two lots. I'm not really sure. But, and the other points are, there are some, there were some that plans, I believe, the voters know for. I talked to Gary Griffin. You were on the, I think the site distance.
It was 10 to 0.
Oh, was it 10 to 0 on that one? Okay, because I asked Gary, I thought he told me he voted no for it, but I guess he didn't remember. Yeah. Well, anyway, I did receive a lot of calls on it. I'm opposed to it. The site distance is a concern on the corner, too, which I don't think that hits the criteria of the county. And so I'm opposed to this subdivision. He can just, there's no hardship for him to go with five acre lots. He doesn't need the three acre variance.
Any more comments? Now, we'll move on to bill 4556.
Bill number 4556, requested by Mike Elam, sponsored by council as a whole. An ordinance establishing new traffic regulations and establishing penalties for violations thereof.
Have any comments?
A lot of these things are in my district, and Craig gave his recommendations for the stops at the different locations and the no parking on Cam Brook Drive, and I go along with his recommendations.
Any other comments on this bill? Not, we'll move on to bill number 4557.
Bill number 4557, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by council as a whole. An ordinance approving execution of cost apportionment agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, MoDOT, for an environmental study of Route N connecting to the existing Route 364 Environmental Impact Statement, job number J6S3342.
Anybody have any comments on this bill? Seeing none, we'll move on to bill 4558.
Bill number 4558, requested by Ryan Graham, sponsored by council as a whole. An ordinance amending Section 250.500 ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, relating to county park regulations.
You want to, Ryan, you want to come out here for a minute? Go. You want to just kind of give us an executive summary on the fees, how you're raising them, why you're raising them, and all those reasons?
Yep. Before I even came into this role, there's been a study going on with the staff to evaluate the amenities within our parks to determine our costs that we were charging compared to other entities here in St. Charles County and across the state. And what we found out was a lot of the amenities within our parks, we were charging a much lower rate than some of our other competitors. So what this proposal will do will allow us to establish a fee schedule to a not-to-exceed rate. The intent of that is to allow us to increase our rates a little bit on amenities that we recognize that we aren't able to compete with other entities. But at the same time, it would allow us to perhaps reduce some rates throughout the year in terms of like winter camping in December where we're not getting a lot of reservations. We can go to a reduced winter fees on those type of things. So the not-to-exceed figure kind of allows us a little bit of flexibility, especially when new parks around the county come online. If they start charging a lower rate, we have the ability to compete a little bit and adjust our rates accordingly.
Did you provide us with a table on here?
Yeah. What I sent to you originally was the not-to-exceed rates, and that's based off market studies that we went throughout the area in the state. And then last week, I sent you a proposed fee schedule of what we would like to charge for 2018, just to indicate that we're not going to that max. We've actually did some research and put in some time to kind of evaluate where we were and tried to make the recommendation that we thought we would be able to compete and still provide cheap services for all our residents.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any more comments from the council? Hearing none. Oh, did you have one?
Let me.
I just wanted to compliment Ryan on the nice job he did at the Transportation Museum on the Christmas display. I was there with my grandson, and all the kids were really enjoying the trains that he worked as. I heard the volunteers told me that Ryan worked his you-know-what off on that train display. And it showed, Ryan, you did a nice job.
I took my grandchildren also, and they were, they were very, very impressed with the trains.
For our Christmas candlelight, we had a record attendance for documented years that we had this year. So, one night, we had over a thousand people at one of our Christmas candlelight events. And so, it's been very good.
Seeing none, what other comments? Move on to bill forty-five fifty-nine.
Bill number forty-five fifty-nine, requested by Kisker and Pittman Hill Roads Park Committee, sponsored by councils as a whole. An ordinance to name the park land located between Kisker Road and Pittman Hill Road, Veterans Tribute Park, based on a recommendation made by the Kisker and Pittman Hill Roads Park Committee.
Any comments?
I guess I'll take that one. The park is in District Three, and there was a lot of feelings heavily on both sides when this came up. I know the Vantage family has lobbied heavily to have it named after their son, but there were a number of people who stepped up and said, "We don't feel that a park should be named for any one particular person." So, going back and forth on that, the way we went of compromise is, we appointed a veterans committee who studied this, and we asked them to come back for a recommendation. And this is the recommendation that the parks committee came back with, the committee that was formed. They came back with Veterans Tribute Park. There's been a lot of discussion about it, and I think I'm good with Veterans Tribute Park. I know whenever you name a park, you're never going to make everybody happy. But this was the name after a lot of discussion that the committee went through and did a lot of research, and they came back with this name. So, I'm good with honoring the committee's work on this and naming it Veterans Tribute Park.
Any other comments? Seeing none, let's move on to bill forty-five sixty.
Bill number forty-five sixty, requested by Steve Almond, sponsored by councils as a whole. An ordinance amending chapter one twenty-one of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, relating to the St. Charles County Housing Assistance Program.
Do we have any comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to bill forty-five sixty-one.
Bill number forty-five sixty-one, requested by Dave Hammond, Mike Klinghammer, and Joe Brazel, sponsored by Dave Hammond, Mike Klinghammer, and Joe Brazel. An ordinance amending section four ten point two ninety of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, the Unified Development Ordinance, to establish setbacks for new structures in historic sites.
Having served as chairman on this committee, basically, what we were looking at probably had more to do with defiance than any other areas of the county is that where we have existing buildings that were built prior to our current setbacks and ordinances. And this, this particular bill would, would give them the ability to maintain and what's the existing setbacks are there, and keep it more uniform for this, for this particular area. Did you have anything else you wanted to add, Mr.-
I was just going to say that we had met, I met with Mr. Hazelwood and Ardita on Thursday of last week, and there's some, a few things we have to get together. Me and Dave might get together and just tweak a few things on it. The premise is, is to, whenever you, you can't have a setback thirty feet in a, actually, defiance, I think, is one of the only, it's not really a town, it's an incorporated county, but it's like a town, it's one of, it's only kind in the county, because a lot of them get incorporated to a city. So, we, it's not actually a historic district, so we're going to, we're going to name it, platted after nineteen fifty-nine, we're going to make it a little more broad. But there's a few things we're going to tweak, and that's what that, basically, all these from forty-five sixty-one to forty-five sixty-eight, most of them are pretty good. These are the bills we worked on for like six months. We had staff involved and the three council members, and we, I felt that we did a good job. I felt that we came to a conclusion. Some of the bills I didn't necessarily agree with on the staff's perspective, and I think that went both ways. But I think we agreed to try to make it work legally and come up with what the council's recommendations were legislatively. And so, there's a few tweaks that we have to get together with, but for the most part, the intent of what these bills are is what they are. And I think that Keith requested that we present them, and then we, we get together and tweak them a little bit more. So, they'll probably either a substitute or just some strikes, and some vocabulary changes, and some wording, and things like that. But that's the direction that we, that we'd like to go in at this point.
Mr. Cronin?
I just want to make sure while, while Mike Herbert's here, and Megan's here, and Keith's here, is Mr. Bauer going to be able to build his barn? Okay? So, I'm hearing there's going to be some tweaks yet to this, and essentially, in my district, there's a gentleman has an eighteen hundreds barn that takes up a lot of property, and he wants to build a new machine shed, and there's going to be a tweak to this that they're working on, so Mr. Bauer can build his barn. Are we good with that, Keith? Is that going to happen?
Yes, that's bill forty-five sixty-four. I would expect a substitute would come forward to take care of-
So, it'll be included in forty-five sixty-four for next meeting, then?
We've got eight bills here, and I think that's the one-
Because Farmer Bauer is about six-six, three hundred pounds, got a pitchfork, and he's going to be chasing me and Dave Hammond with that pitchfork, okay?
I'm respectful of both you and Mr. Bauer.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Is there, is there any more questions? I kind of want to move through these one at a time, so let's not get too far ahead of ourselves. Any other questions about bill forty-five sixty-one?
Mr. Chairman, I remember talking about this several years ago, and I thought everybody agreed at the time that it was silly to require those setbacks. I was surprised that we hadn't fixed it. I thought we had already fixed it. So, I think it's a good, that's a good bill.
Thank you, Steve. Moving on to bill forty-five sixty-two.
Bill number forty-five sixty-two, requested by Dave Hammond, Mike Klinghammer, and Joe Brazel, sponsored by Dave Hammond, Mike Klinghammer, and Joe Brazel. An ordinance amending sections four oh five point one thirty-D, four oh five point one thirty-five-D, four oh five point one seventy-D, and four oh five point one seventy-five-D of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, the Unified Development Ordinance, to allow for adjustments and changes in setbacks within the C-one neighborhood commercial, C-two general commercial, I-one light industrial, and I-two heavy industrial zoning districts.
Basically, this would allow closer setbacks when you have the same type of zoning. So, if you have two industrial lots next to each one, each other, those setbacks could be reduced. Now, even though those setbacks can be reduced, there still are bed building regulations and so forth to deal with- Fire safety. Fire safety and fire conflagration, so.
This one, I was, I was happy that our, our little committee heard from a developer of large rectangular metal buildings. And he, he's proud of that, and he puts it right on his business card, that's what he builds. And he pointed out when he has one large rectangular metal building up against another one, that it doesn't really need the setbacks on both sides of it, like other things. And I think, I think Mr. Davis had a very, very good, pointed, common sense approach to it, and I'm glad that we were able to include his suggestion in the, in the revisions.
Well, and also, it goes to the theory in like Old Town St. Charles, where the buildings are all but up next to each other down Main Street, and we don't have that ability in this county. So, that goes with that, too. Like in small, like defiance, again, if they were in the town, in the corner, they're next to each other, and it doesn't, you know, so in the other areas, Augusta, if we, if we have contracts with the county and so forth, it just gives them more latitude.
And it is like the like. I want to make sure that we don't, conflicts seem to happen more when we have residential that is backing up to commercial or, or retail, and, and we're not doing anything that changes that. We want to make sure that the residential still has a degree of separation from the business.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I think you may have mentioned this, but make sure I, I have it clear. The setbacks are not, they're being reduced in situations where it's strictly aesthetic, right? I mean, you still have to have a setback to let a fire truck go between the two buildings. So, you're basically dealing with setbacks in terms of the aesthetics, not the safety. So, nobody's compromising any safety here.
Absolutely not.
Just what it will look like. Okay, I think that's-
No, I think, I think our building and fire codes address that fairly well, even though, you know, you move a building closer, you have to do certain things to those exterior walls to increase the fire resistance, so that when a building catches fire, it doesn't catch the, the one next door. And so, I feel comfortable that our building codes cover that very well. Any other questions on that bill? Moving on to bill forty-five sixty-three.
Bill number forty-five sixty-three, requested by Dave Hammond, Mike Klinghammer, and Joe Brazel, sponsored by Dave Hammond, Mike Klinghammer, and Joe Brazel. An ordinance adding a new section four oh five point oh five-five of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, the Unified Development Ordinance, to allow condemnation acquired land applicants to apply to the Planning and Zoning Commission for setback adjustments when affected by right-of-ways.
Basically, we had a situation not too long ago where some people wanted to build a gymnasium, and the county was requiring they, donation of some right-of-way to accommodate that rezoning. And this, this particular bill gives the county the ability to negotiate using, using that setback, reducing that setback in acquiring right-of-way. And it's just something I never understood why the county never had this ability before. And it could save the county a considerable amount of money if we had to buy right-of-way also. So, is there any questions on that bill?
Again, on this one, Dave, I think Greg Dorman had requested that we, is Greg, are you here?
Yes.
Yeah, I, he made a request that we get with him and just go over some tweaking on this one as well. So, I, I think some of these, most, for the most part, some of them are good, some, but there's a couple of them that need some language twisting to it. So, we'll be agreeable to, you know, we want to make it right. So, just make note of that.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, let's move on to bill forty-five sixty-four.
Bill number forty-five sixty-four, requested by Dave Hammond, Mike Klinghammer, and Joe Brazel, sponsored by Dave Hammond, Mike Klinghammer, and Joe Brazel. An ordinance amending section four oh five point eight oh eighty of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, the Unified Development Ordinance, to authorize certain buildings used as barns are for similar purposes as permissive uses in the A agricultural zoning district, and to reduce the categories of size limits for accessory structures in the A agricultural zoning districts.
Basically, this would allow a bill, a barn-type structure to be built in agricultural areas, even though there's no residents on the site, and reduces the size category. Actually, I think some of that actually increased the size, the, the size category for those structures in agricultural zoning. Is there any questions or comments?
No, again, this was a consistent complaint I'd get in, in my district, that we had an ordinance that would not allow any kind of accessory structure, including barns being built on agricultural property without a house, which we, the committee felt that that's a restriction of property rights. I mean, we understand that we don't want people living in barns, and that's already a law, but you can't make a law because something's already illegal. So, we felt that this was completely unnecessary, and if somebody wanted to buy twenty acres and build a barn on it, so he could put his tractor and his equipment, and there's nothing wrong with that. And so, that's why we changed this. That's kind of it in a, and then we, there were so many, we had six different categories, I think, and barn sizes, three to five acres this big, five to ten, or, you know, whatever. We had too many categories, so we just, we just broke it down to, I think, three or four or something. That was, that was just different recommendations by people on the committee.
Yeah, I think that's more addressed on the next-
Oh, that's the next one?
Yes. Any more questions about forty-five sixty-four?
You have, you have a lot of rural areas where it's real common for a farmer to build a barn on a specific piece of agricultural land, just to keep that equipment that he works that land on. So, I, I think this is a good bill. In fact, I didn't even realize this there, on my own property, I built my barn before I built my home, okay? So, where I live. So, I mean, I think this gives people the opportunity to, if it's a gag property and they want to build a machinery shed, they can do so, whether they live there or not. And I think that's the flexibility, it gives them some flexibility that they need.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none, we'll move on to bill, bills for introduction, forty-five sixty-five.
Bill number forty-five sixty-five, requested by Dave Hammond, Mike Klinghammer, and Joe Brazel, sponsored by Dave Hammond, Mike Klinghammer, and Joe Brazel. An ordinance amending section four oh five point oh ninety-E of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, the Unified Development Ordinance, to reduce the categories of size limits for accessory structures in the RR, R-one A, R-one B, R-one C, R-one D, and R-one E, single-family residential zoning districts.
Okay. So, this would not, this would not be residential or agricultural area, this would be residential. And there was a number of these categories, and I know Wayne Anthony worked on these, but I don't know that he had any logic when they came up with the size of those accessory structures for, in residential districts. So, we, we actually reduced the number, and in some cases, increased the size. So, if you have any questions about those, we could probably make sure you get a copy of those, if you haven't had an opportunity to look at those yet, so.
Joder, did you originally come up with those sizes? Maybe that explains where the-
I didn't come up with it. I wish I had.
They did, Dave and Wayne Anthony.
Pardon me. Any other questions?
I have just one other question, and maybe, I guess, some clarification we might need from Mr. Hazelwood down the road. But if someone wants to build something outside of this parameter, so for instance, let's say the particular thing it rolls into is a six hundred square foot structure, and they want to build a seven hundred, and they have a good reasons to do so. If I'm, am I correct, because we ran on this with Mr. Bauer, is it, if we pass this, do they have to sue the county in circuit court, or can it go to board of zoning, an adjustment for this? And if it's something if we're not clear on, then maybe we could fix with this, because I really, I don't like a situation where a citizen has to go to a court to try to get something done on property that's outside the UDO. I'd rather them go to the BZA, or have, give the director of the community development the, the power to grant or not grant, or even back to the council. I mean, that's the situation we have now, and with these new size limits, we will run the same thing. And going back to Mr. Bauer's situation, he had a twenty-two hundred foot barn he tore down, it was built before nineteen fifty-nine. He went, bought a new twenty-five hundred square foot barn, a little bit bigger, because it was the size he had to buy at the county fair, it was a steel structure, went to put it up, and found out that he had too many accessory structures, he couldn't put it up, and the only way it could be fixed is with, by, by him suing St. Charles County. Being a lifelong citizens county, he did not want to sue the county, okay? But I don't want to see other people putting that same predicament. I think we need to have a mechanism, be it BZA, be it the director of community development, be it the council, for people that have a situation that falls outside the UDO, in, in relation to accessory structures, if that makes any sense.
What, when you say sue the county, what, why are you saying that?
That's what they, Mike would tell us, that's what, by the law, that was what, the way the law is currently written, that's what you have to do. Right? Am I right?
That's correct.
And I think we got to fix that. So, we don't have to fix it now, we got to fix it down the road. Because I think a citizen, you know, they'd feel like, I mean, we're not attorneys, you folks are, but most people think when you sue somebody, that's an act of aggression, that's something you don't want to do, okay? This man's lived, his family's lived in the county for four generations in that area, they don't want to sue the county. But I think the person should have the right to some type of due process, other than illegal, going to, going to a court and suing someone. So, whether we give the director, in this particular instance, Mike, I think you could have worked that out. If you had, you didn't have your hands tied by the, by the law, you could have worked that out with Mr. Bauer. I don't think there'd been any problem. had been any problem, okay? So, I'm fine with either giving him the power, or the BZA, or even going back to the council. But I don't want to have to put a citizen in the position, having to sue the county, just so he can build a barn, to replace a barn that needed to be tore down. So, maybe there's a way we can work on that down the road, too, okay?
Well, doesn't the historic structure, that would take care with the buildings built before nineteen fifty-nine?
If we do what they're talking about doing before nineteen fifty-nine, before coding, that will take care of Mr. Bauer.
But that's what we're talking about with Keith.
But I'm feeling we're going to have the same thing pop up again down the road, unless we have an avenue for those folks that have an issue with the UDO and this, to go somewhere other than to circuit court. And I see Greg Dorman smiling, because he probably knows about what I'm referring to, okay?
All right.
Any other comments? Move on to Bill forty-five sixty-six.
Bill number forty-five sixty-six, request by Dave Hammond, Mike Klinghammer, and Joe Brazel, sponsored by Dave Hammond, Mike Klinghammer, and Joe Brazel, in ordinance amending sections four-ten point one-ten C, four-ten point one-sixty, four-ten point three-seventy B, and four-ten point three-ninety of the ordinances of Saint Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, the Unified Development Ordinance, to exempt from engineering and inspection requirements private streets that are less than a quarter-mile in length and consist solely of rock pavement, provided they do not cross any water course channel.
I put this bill together because if you take a small development, and recently, I had a complaint regarding one where they had five lots, and they were putting in a gravel road, this is out in rural part of the Saint Paul area. The engineering cost was as much, it was five thousand dollars, about as much as it would cost to build the gravel road. So, as far as I'm concerned, for something that minor, a short gravel road, and I think we're going to tweak this and set it with a minimum of six lots, that you don't need to get it engineered or get inspections of it.
Did you say with a minimum or a maximum?
Maximum.
A maximum.
Maximum.
Six lots. So, does anybody else have any comments regarding this bill?
That's been a reoccurring problem in my district, but it's a rural area, okay? And I get it. But Greg called, talked to me earlier this week, and I'm fine if we limit to rural areas, or for instance, where maybe a problem, not a problem in my district, it could be a problem, for instance, in Mike Helem's district, okay? Where they wouldn't want a subdivision with gravel roads. So, I think if you, Greg talked about different mechanisms to limit it to rural areas, okay? And I think that might work, okay?
Actually, he submitted, we got a draft bill tonight, and we'll submit that, we'll review that, Dave, and submit it as a substitute.
The other thing, I think, something we can talk about, this may be something else down the road, but when you have gravel driveways going up to a paved county road, it creates one hell of a dangerous situation for motorcyclists, okay? And probably bicyclists as well. Because when you've got gravel that's going off of a private driveway and getting spun out on a county road, especially if there's a curve involved, and a motorcycle comes around and hits that gravel, it's like being on ball bearings. So, maybe we need to look at this, too. If they're going to have a gravel entrance like that to a county road that's paved, maybe, I don't think it'd be too much of imposition to make them pave back ten or fifteen feet, okay? I think it'd make it a lot safer for a lot of folks to do so. I don't think that would be too costly of an imposition for doing that. And, you know, so that's just something we can maybe think about tweaking as well, okay?
Well, I think I disagree with you there, because even if you had a paved area, you may have gravel that may wash down from gravel roads and onto that or into the ditch, hopefully, but I don't know that.
I don't agree with that.
I don't know that that's as big a problem as you might think it is.
Heck, the county's got gravel roads going out on Blacktop Road. So, what are you going to do with that?
I understand that, but if you talk to anybody, it's a motorcycle, motorcyclist, I mean, there's a lot of guys that wipe out doing that.
Motorcycles are dangerous.
Bicycles, Joe, for a long time, bicycles.
Bicycles are dangerous, too.
I grew up on a ground road, four points seven miles, and I had a motorcycle, and I never had any problems. But any other comments? We'll move on to the next bill.
Mr. Chairman?
What the bill does not require is the engineering, but does it still have standards for how much rock, how much rock has to be in it, and is there an inspection to make sure that rock is there?
I would hope that the county, and I plan on working on this, come up with a guide to hand out to people that are building that road. But it's not, it's not that difficult to build a gravel road, and it's not very difficult to maintain it. So, I don't know that we need to put inspections on it.
Yeah, I was trying to, I don't know if we talked about this when you came in and visited with me, but looking back, I think this came about, maybe Mr. Brazel was on the council then, was it Westwind?
Westwood.
Or something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
And actually, these were folks that lived in a subdivision, it had private streets, and they, I was practicing law at the time, and it came to me. And, you know, of course, they moved in, and the developer said, oh, yeah, we got six inches or eight inches of gravel. Well, within five or six years, the streets were falling apart, and we went out and did core samples, and they only had three or four inches of gravel, okay? And I think after that is when the county actually put some of these standards in. So, I mean, I understand your concern about not, you know, is the cost really worth it? But on the other hand, is there still going to be some, are we just going to ask the buyer to beware if he goes into a private subdivision, to beware, and just make sure that the developer actually put the eight inches and not something less? Because I think, I think that might be going a little bit too far. I don't know if this even goes there. But you see my point?
I thought the committee, I thought we did have, I thought our intention was to have standards that the county would at least, the idea was, is the engineering was what was costing so much. So, that was one of the problems with the people that were complaining about it. But we still should require, I thought, that, because we just, this was the last bill, requested this by you, and we just did it the last meeting. But I, it should have standards, you got to have standards, you got to have what the spec would be. And that should be part of the ordinance, and it should probably have an inspection, I mean, don't you think? I mean, we can talk about it, but that's kind of what I thought the intent was. The idea was eliminate all these expensive engineering fees and stuff, but say, you got to have it twenty-four feet wide, six inches of three inch, and two inches of one, whatever, you know? And that's the standard, and that whatever the, you know, the construction standard is, is what it should be, just like everything else. And then that's what they got to build it to. But you don't have to have it all engineered and everything, because you don't need to engineer gravel roads.
Yes.
And that was the problem. But we, you and I can talk about that.
Any other comments?
Just one more, Dave. We, I ran into this once in my, in my area one time, the county standard, I think, was twelve inches of rock, okay? And in my area, it's not cheap to get rock, okay? Because you're a long ways from Weber, okay? So, for instance, it happened to Mike Vogt, and I think maybe my Rocky Morgan might be as well, in Saint Paul area, that the, to the county standard, the amount of rock that they wanted for these small three or four or five-house subdivisions was really cost prohibitive. So, if you're going to look at the standard, maybe you could tie the standard to the amount of traffic, okay? I mean, if you've got, for instance, Mike Vogt's a farmer, he's subdivided parts of his farm for his kids to build houses on, they all got farm tractors, you know, they can add more rock as they go, as they need it. So, maybe you can make the standard a lesser than a public street, because I think right now the standard's pretty close to what the, what a public street is. And I think, am I right? Is it a foot of rock? Mike, do you know?
Eight inches.
Yeah. So, anyway, take a look at it.
Well, I think that's one of the reasons we limited it to six lots, too, so I, but I'm willing to discuss it further. Any other comments on that bill? Hearing none, let's move on to forty-five sixty-seven.
Bill number forty-five sixty-seven, request by Dave Hammond, Mike Klinghammer, and Joe Brazel, sponsored by Dave Hammond, Mike Klinghammer, and Joe Brazel, in ordinance amending section four oh five point three thirty and four oh five point three forty of the ordinances of Saint Charles County, Missouri, the Unified Development Ordinance, to allow current market value used in the fifty percent capital improvement rule on floodplain development areas to be determined by a state-licensed real estate appraiser.
Basically, a lot of other communities allow this, and I'm not sure why Saint Charles County hasn't. But if you've got a state-licensed appraiser comes in, and I think you'll see this more, where we've got commercial properties, or homes that are in the floodplain, and determining their value if they want to make improvements, that they have the ability to have a state-licensed appraiser determine and present that as part of the permit for the, for development. Any questions?
No, this is, everything was, this bill's good. I met with Keith and Ardita on this one as well. We do have, we have the question, we sent this ordinance to FEMA, and they're going to, we're putting them on notice to say, are you guys good? Or hopefully, they'll get back with us quickly. We'll, by the next meeting, we'll, should have an answer on either yes, no, or this is what you need to do, or whatever. But we did put it to them, and then that's just what they required us to do. So, we'll just do that and see where it takes us.
And if we don't hear back from them, we could table it till we do. Because we don't want to cause any problems with our flood insurance program. Move on to the next bill, forty-five sixty-eight.
Bill number forty-five sixty-eight, request by Joe Brazel, Dave Hammond, and Mike Klinghammer, sponsored by Joe Brazel, Dave Hammond, and Mike Klinghammer, in ordinance amending sections four oh five point oh sixty, four oh five point five-two-five G, four-ten point one-eighty, four-ten point four-fifty, and four-twelve point oh eighty of the ordinances of Saint Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, the Unified Development Ordinance, regarding performance guarantees.
I guess I want to thank staff, because they did a lot of this workforce, because there was a lot of problems with, with our performance guarantees and complaints that we received from developers that, I think we've made this into a fine bill that will address concerns down the road when it comes to performance, performance guarantees, get money back to people in increments if they so desire, and make it run a lot smoother when it comes to performance guarantees for projects. Anybody have any comments on this?
No, again, this one was reviewed by, I think Greg went over this one pretty well, Dorman, and we had, the committee had them in all these meetings. And like I said, on this particular one, I didn't necessarily agree with it, but we agreed to put it forth and go with it. But it does help, it does help them release the money a little bit quicker, which is what staff agreed to work with on, and that was one of the biggest complaints. And so, it doesn't, it helps a little bit. So, it's, I guess, it's improved. It's definitely been improved, yes.
Any other comments on that? Hearing none, do we have any table bills to be removed?
I have to, I have table bill forty-five, let's see, which one is it?
Mr. Chairman? Do you question, do you intend to have a work session on these various bills dealing with the zoning ordinance?
From the ad hoc committee?
Pardon me?
From the ad hoc committee?
No, a work session for all of us.
On those bills from the ad hoc committee, yes.
On the bills from the ad hoc committee?
Yeah, on these five or six bills. I mean, if you are, I know that the staff has a few things they want to make you aware of. And we can do that in a work session, and I personally would like to see that. But if you decide not to have a work session, we'll get that information to you before the next meeting, and then be able to answer any questions you might have about it, or even make a short presentations on it.
I had not planned to, and I prefer not to. I think staff sat through most of our meetings on this issue, but I'd be glad if they have some, if they have some information riding.
I think the staff had some concerns, which the other four people haven't heard. And, you know, I've heard them, I've heard them. Some of them, I think, have merit, others maybe not. But it's ultimately going to be up to all seven of you to decide whether, you know, you want to go with this bill, or whether you want to amend it.
We can address that. The council meeting is fine.
Would the council like to have a work session on this, our next meeting?
I don't know, it's up to you. I mean, we had six months of meetings, and staff was in every meeting. I kind of agree with you, Dave. I mean, we can, I, we got, I got a memo on Thursday. We, last month, we were supposed to introduce these bills, and we waited, waited, we were going to have them introduced in December, and they weren't ready, the legal didn't have them ready. So, then we waited until January, and I get a memo, we get a memo on Wednesday night with points that, that the staff, the legal team was concerned about. And so, I met with Keith and Ardita, and I was a little frustrated because of the fact that we spent so much time on this, and staff was involved in every meeting, and that the points came up at the last minute, that we agreed to address the legal matters. The legislative matters are what the, the intent of the legislation is the intent of what the committee came up with. The legal matters would be what we would talk about on making point A meet point B. And that was what the memo said. It was, well, this forty-one, forty-two doesn't make forty-three, forty-five match, so you can't do it. Well, as far as the council members go, that's not our concern, because that's not our job. We're not attorneys, and we can't sit there and manipulate this code and codify this code. But they know what the intent is, and they know what our legislation, what we, what we're asking for. We spent so much time on this. So, it seems completely unfair and unauthentic to, after the fact, trying to make legislative changes. Because this is what we kind of agreed, like the escrow bill, I could sit there and argue that in a totally different direction. But I, as a committee, we kind of came up with this. This is what kind of we think, and I didn't agree with it, but it's like, okay, fine, we'll just, that's what the committee came up with. So, we could go, we could banner this thing back and forth, but from a legislative position, I feel that this is what the committee spent so much time on, and this is what the perspective is. Unless there's, like there's, like if they don't codify, that's one thing. But that's my position, Dave. I mean, we can, we can, whatever you want, whatever you guys want to do. But we spent a lot of time on this thing. I don't want to, I don't know. We can think about it, Dave, whatever you want.
And not only that, I think staff had plenty of time to, they presented their comments all throughout this. And I think where it got to a point, you know, where, you know, you think, well, who's presenting the legislate, legislation? Legislators or the staff? And this is what we came up with, and we expect the attorneys to draft those. But it's a pleasure of the county, the county council, if you all want to sit through a work session.
My point would be no, because like you said, we had, we invited staff to participate in every meeting, and at the last two, they decided not to show up, because they were determined on some of the ordinances that they were going to be, that they already gave their input, so.
Personally, and I, as you guys well know, I was active participant in all those, and staff was as well, it doesn't really matter if we call it a work session, or if we call it a council meeting. The only difference is, do we sit there, or do we sit here? And other than that, it makes zero difference if it starts at seven or it starts at six. I mean, who really cares? We're still, I still want to hear what staff has to say. I think that's incumbent. Wish we perhaps could have got it a little sooner while we were still, we were still in the drafting before we presented it. Be that as it may, that's okay. Bring it forward, tell us if you think that there's problems with it. I think that staff needs to tell us, hey, you guys, you know, before you pass us, you know, here's some things you need to think about. That's fine. I just, we can start at seven or we can start at six, we're still going to get the same, we're going to get exactly the same information.
I guess I'm just a little irritated. We got, we're coming down to the wire where we're presenting these, and now staff still wants to have more input into it, but...
I think the committee worked real hard on this. I'm fine with the recommendations, because I think these, most of these recommendations are designed to make things easier for the general public. So, that being said, we got two weeks between now and the next meeting. If staff's got concerns, I think they should get them to the chair, okay? And I think we got plenty of time to talk this over at next meeting, okay? But I don't see any sense for another work session. If their staff's got concerns, we got two weeks to work it out before final passage, anyway.
Good point. Good point.
My only concern is, I want to make sure that we have the wording done and finalized. My only concern from a legal perspective is, I don't want to pass a bill that is not worth the paper that it's written on. So, yes, I understand, we're not attorneys, but if our attorneys are telling us, you're about to pass a bill that won't hold up in a court, that's a waste of our time. So I want to make sure that if we are passing a bill, it's a bill that our attorneys feel like they have a foot to stand on when they go into court. Otherwise, I don't want to pass that bill. So I want to make sure that everything, all the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, and it's done. And I understand your intent of what you want to do, but intent needs to be in the law. So if it's written that way to where they can defend it, I will feel much better about it. If it's not written that way, then.
Have a good Christmas.
I don't feel good about it.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure the questions are with the attorneys. I'm not understanding.
Well, it sounded like some of them are, and at least, on at least two of the bills, we talked about how the attorneys have to do some changes of the language. We talked about at least two of these eight bills that there needs to be some change. Mr. Elman?
Mr. Chairman, don't, that's, the legal problems are between you and the county councilors, okay? And you can run this however you want to, you have your own rules. My only experience is, you know, in the Missouri Senate, the Missouri House, bills get sent to committee, and people spend a lot of time working on them, and they come out of committee with a recommendation, do pass or not pass. Obviously, three of you have done a lot of hard work on this, and you're recommending that it do pass. The question is, do all seven of you want to basically just say, okay, we're going to take, you know, these three people think it's a good idea, and if you want to go ahead and just pass it based on that, it's fine. Or normally, in the process, a bill would come out, do pass, it would go to the floor, and there would be a debate involving all 164 House members or all 34 senators. And that's what I'm asking, I guess what I'm asking here, if there's still going to be a debate, if we're still going to have a chance, if the, if the staff is going to have a chance to make their comments, not only to the committee, which would sit there and listen to them and took them in consideration, but the other four of you who weren't there to hear some of the concerns that were expressed. So, you know, you can do it how you want, and if you want to just wait and bring this up for a third reading, or, yeah, last, next meeting, then we'll just go ahead and make our presentation then. But, you know, it's, it's going to be a little, a little bit stilted, a little bit formal, but if that's what you want us to do, that's, that's fine. I just know the staff wants to be heard on some of these things, and I, let me again tell you that the vast majority of this, I've talked to them, they've talked to me, it's fine. But there are so few things that they want to bring to your attention, and if four of you still want to do it, that's, that's fine. That's, that's how the system works.
I guess, I guess I wish they'd have been brought to our attention before we get the, before the bills are now on the agenda, but I understand that, and I don't have a problem with it, if that's the pleasure of the council.
The only, the problem I have with it, Steve, and I pointed this out to Keith and Ardita, is we've been working on this so hard, and I agree with most of everything you said on giving you guys a fair opportunity to debate it, and I wouldn't, not ever give anybody an opportunity to debate it. But the thing that's unfair about it is, we spent all this time on it, and then we asked to present these ordinances in December, and we were told that they needed more time to tweak it, and so three days before delivery, on Thursday.
Who's they?
Keith and Ardita.
Okay.
On Wednesday at four o'clock, she sent an email out that had the points of interest. That gives us two days to have this conversation, when we had two months. And so me and Dave had the conversation that, so is that, is that how important, all the time we spent on this? If they weren't that concerned about it, but now all of a sudden we're supposed to rush this in two days and have this conversation on Monday? The idea was is to hammer all this stuff up prior to the meeting and all the details, so we wouldn't have to have this conversation on details. And that's what we were wanting to do, is get the legal matters out of the way, and most of the points are making this match this and this match that, and none of that is our concern. That's not our concern. We're not, we're not attorneys. It's like, this is what we presented, this is what we want, so just make it work. And, and so, we are deeply concerned that it, and Mike, you are correct, but it's just the way it was handled, and so that's the frustration level, to be honest about it. And so, would we not want staff's honest input? We do, but we felt that we, we were, they were at every meeting, they gave their side of it, so now it comes down to almost a legislative debate. And so, if the committee put that forth, and that's what we recommend, I mean, but like I said, I guess Dave and me and Mike can talk about it. I mean, Mike's points were good. But now, if you guys are going to sit there and say a committee's, a committee's.
Joe, if I can cut you off for just a second, I'm not sure that's really the appropriate venue for having the discussion about the information that we're getting from staff and when we get it. If they, if.
But Michael, those are the reasons why David and I are frustrated. I mean, it's relevant.
And I understand that, and I'm, trust me, I was right next to you during all these, these meetings. If, if admin still has concerns about it, they're going to get it to us one way or another, whether it's formally where we're sitting here or if we're sitting there. That's their, that's their duty to tell us what they honestly believe on it. We'll get that one way or another, and Steve, yes, we want to continue to have that dialogue. Would have been nice to hear it in our ad hoc committee meetings.
Nice to hear what?
It would have been nice to hear it during, more of it during the ad hoc, while these were being drafted, but that's okay. If, if concerns aren't, you're distracting. If things come up during the, you know, after it gets drafted, that's fine. We still want to hear it.
My point is, whatever, we can argue about what we should or shouldn't have done, whatever we did to the ad hoc committee is just for three of you. The other four haven't heard any of those arguments.
I'd like to chip in on that one.
And, and the other four can give us much deference to the three of you who did put a lot of time in, as they want.
Nobody on any of our committees just anticipate that we're going to.
At this point, gentlemen, at this point, I'd like to hear from the other council members that weren't part of that ad hoc committee, if they would like for us to hold a work session.
I got something for you.
First of all, I, you know, I would like to commend, you know, you three, you did a huge amount of work. I mean, and every time I'm coming in, I see the meetings going on, and, but, you know, you guys hammer things out, and I think you did, you know, probably 95 percent of what you come up with, I think, is pretty much agreeable to almost everyone, okay? The 5 percent that we're talking about is, is really a small amount, and if, you know, I personally would like to hear the other side on that 5 percent. And it really is a small amount, I think.
Yeah.
That there's a disagreement on, or a question about.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Cronin?
Yes, go ahead.
The committee did a nice job putting together a report, and I read it, about why you guys changed what you changed and what you changed, okay? Going back to Mr. Elman's question, though, staff and administration sent us nothing, okay? If you all have concerns, I suggest you guys put together a report, no differently than the committee did, to inform the other four council members what your concerns are, because we've not seen that. I've read the committee's report, I've read everything that's in here, and I think it all looks pretty darn good, but if you've got concerns, those have not been passed on to us, okay? Okay?
There's, also, there's meeting minutes that we can pass out to everybody or email. If you guys read every, every meeting minute of every meeting, they're all in here, and staff's comments are in there, and you might want to read those, too, because they're all in the meeting minutes.
Okay, moving on, are there any table bills to be removed?
Yeah. Bill 4541, which one is it?
That's the Summers Road bill.
Yeah.
What do you want to do with it?
I, it's, I talked to Mike about this, and the lot sizes are 10,000 square feet. The reason he asked for the zoning is he came and explained it, there are two lots, there's a lake in the lane, and it's smaller, so the lots aren't as small as.
Do you want to remove this from the table?
I'm sorry, dude, did I not?
No.
I'd like to remove, Bill.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay.
This is contiguous to subdivision in O'Fallon, and the lots are similar or smaller. And so, I think the citizens in that area were a little confused that they didn't understand that he could do this. I mean, it's permissible, permissible zoning. The lots are some lots that are two acres and whatnot, but when we looked at all the different angles, if we voted down, he'll, he'll, he's got more than 25 percent continuality, contiguous, so he'll just go right into O'Fallon. And this way, at least, our staff can monitor it to make sure everything's done properly, and so, I mean, I'm good with it. I explained, called the neighbors, explained it to them, and I guess he'd rather be in, say, on a corporate account in O'Fallon, so.
Would this be the second reading?
Yes.
Yes.
It would be.
So we can vote.
Does anybody else have any comments on this? Call the bill.
Bill number 4541, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri, by rezoning land from A agricultural district to R1E single-family residential district as per application RZ 17-13. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Bill passes. Any announcement or miscellaneous?
We got these notes about the speaker series that's going on, and the lovely and talented Scott Drachnick is going to be doing the next one from Economic Workforce Development, and that is going to be on Tuesday, January 16th. It's at the MK branch of the award-winning St. Charles City County Library District. So, welcome over to my area of the county. It's good to have you over there. Scott's done a great job at workforce and business development, and Molly Dempsey's done a really good job with Communications Department as a whole, has done a great job of putting this speaker series together. The whole area about that is, we have people stand up here and scream about county transparency on a regular basis, and this has really been designed to get elected officials and department heads out there in the county to really talk about, hey, this is what transportation does, this is what community development does, this is what, this is how your assessor came up with that assessor amount. So I think this has been really great. If anybody wants to get involved in this, you want to find out some more information, you can go on to SCCMO.org/speakersseries, and you can make your reservation for that. It is free, as they all are, but they would prefer that you register, so they know how many people are coming. So when Scott's speaking, I'm sure we may have to get a bigger room to host you there, so there you go. I hope everybody can make it.
Any, anybody else? Seeing none, how about a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries.
[music]